All right, we were a little bit late getting started, but are we, are we ready to jump in? Or Mr. Chair, do you want to?
Let's jump right in.
Okay, so we were kind of up to part three of this discussion. Did we have any questions from anybody's thought of from the last time we met?
Okay.
Please interrupt me as we go along. So I think clarity of where we're going and who's responsible for what is really important. I do want to understand the board's way of work and what they're expecting from me and how the superintendent and I interface with each other. So please give me that feedback as we go along because I want to deliver your legal services the way you need them to. There are, you know, obviously some different lanes on Florida statute, what the superintendent's responsible for versus what the board is responsible for, and we'll kind of touch on that here. If any of, there's a really good presentation that FSBA does on this topic. Andrea Messina has the slide about stay in your lane, you know, some of these slides kind of expand on that. But, you know, it's the board's responsibility about setting policy and those are the board's policies. So you do want to have ownership of those, make sure that they reflect what it is that the priorities and the way of work that you want to do within Florida law. Then we also have some general powers of the school board that are outlined in statute in addition to determining policies and setting rules for the district. That's why you do that, Chapter 120 rulemaking, verse reading, second reading, those kinds of things. Although that was one of the things that was discussed for this legislative session and the idea that they were going to cut down on the amount of restrictions put on boards, maybe getting out of having to do Chapter 120 rulemaking every time you want to change a policy or change the student code of conduct or things like that. The deregulation, that was at least on the list. Not sure how far that's going to go this session or not. But obviously, when you're entering into contracts, that's entered with the board. We should not have any of our high school principals or any school-based principals signing contracts for things. Hopefully, we're, have a pretty good process for that. That all needs to run through the district office. That's how, you know, you find out that bounce houses and other stuff have been set up on campuses and the principal has signed that and they really should not be doing that because that can lead to personal liability for the person signing it.
Mashaka, do you know, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
Do you know, is that pretty much understood across the board? I know everybody does their own school-based activities and things like that, but...
Yes, that, that is pretty understood and I guess it's been maybe like two years ago we were in a situation like that where I don't think that understanding was there, but we've seen that.
Yeah, that's why I'm, yeah, okay. And teachers understand that as well?
We, this, earlier this year, we did some clarification around the process that anybody should go through if they wanted to utilize our name, our logos, any of those things. That is one that we have to constantly do refreshers on because I think people think that they could just kind of make a flyer and put us on there. And so we have done some refreshers on that this year around the process that they would need to go through if they needed to use our letterhead or they need to use any of our signage.
Right, and teachers would not sign for something like a bounce house?
No, all of that goes through. Our bookkeepers and our administrators, any fundraisers or any of those things.
Great.
And it's not, it doesn't completely exonerates us if the Education Foundation or somebody who's in charge of an SAC or somebody like that kind of sets it up because we know on the bounce house example, it's still going to be teacher volunteers or our employee volunteers are kind of overseeing that. And so I would see the district could get pulled back into a lawsuit on those kinds of things even though we had, as the district had not signed the contract in the first place.
Okay, so that, you bring up an interesting point. So if the Ed Foundation as a separate nonprofit and the Governance Board of the Auditorium, right, because they're both separate entities under our umbrella, I would, if they got sued, they could still pull us in?
Well, look, the bounce house example is one that I've seen, so let's stick with that, which may not apply exactly to what you're talking about. But the contract for the bounce house that's signed by, let's say, a parent support organization, not the district, the contract's going to say, well, it has to be staffed by an adult. We know that that's probably going to end up falling to, at least for a portion of the time, our employees.
Employee.
We're going to have a teacher there who's providing that supervision. And so if a student or some visitor to campus were to get injured in that process, they would sue the contracting entity, but then they would also end up suing the district for providing the improper supervision at the time and not up to the standard of the contract.
Let me ask the question a different way. I'm sorry. The Ed Foundation and the Governance Board, the Auditorium, are those contracts, any contracts that they're dealing with, are they coming through us?
No.
So who's signing them?
Any, any of the events that the Ed Foundation is doing, all of that is being done through the Ed Foundation. If the Ed Foundation was going to utilize our facilities, then they would, you know, do Facilitron like normal with that type of, but for instance, we just did Mardi Gras, whatever contract was signed with the venue.
Teresa's signing it.
That's through the Education Foundation and their board. We do, we did not sign anything as far as contracts related to that.
But for liability purposes, we would be protected because of the nonprofit status?
It would depend.
Not necessarily.
It would depend on, on what happened, what the circumstances were and what the contract said and is there a way to say that the district had some sort of involvement with it? Now, I think through Facilitron and our facilities use agreements, it makes it clear that the district has to be named as an additional insured. So that would provide us a level of protection where the district wouldn't have to be stepping in. If it's a facility thing, hey, their lighting on these steps was poor and that's why I fell, that could, us as the owner of the premises could get pulled in that way. Hopefully, that insurance policy would.
I could totally see that, okay. Thanks.
And we can run some like specific examples through, you know, to make sure that we have the procedures that we need in place.
Yeah, maybe for our most scheduled and repetitive events, we might look at those to make sure that we, we are in a, in a place where we limit our liability as much as possible because we know we're going to do those annually, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
Just curious, I'm just curious, yeah, that's me too, yeah.
So, you know, anybody who's willing to pay the filing fee can file a lawsuit and you've got to be in a position of defendant. How good of a lawsuit is depends on a ton of different factors. So that first line of protection is if you are initially named insured through Facilitron, through the facilities use agreements, you can let some other lawyer figure out the nuances of whose responsibility it was, not on the district's dime. So, okay. So some more things that, that boards do, obviously, when we're engaging in real estate transactions or we're just establishing and organizing and adopting the plans. The board sets the direction and the superintendent implements. When I try to explain it to my non-school friends how this works, you're the CEO, but you're the board who sets the direction and that. So there are so many obligations or responsibilities of board members, they don't fit into all one statute. I don't know why they wrote like three of them, but there's a long laundry list and another one of the highlights obviously is overseeing the budget and setting the direction that the board is going. You know, there's a phrase, don't tell me about your values, show me your budget.
Don't tell your values.
That, that will demonstrate what the board is prioritizing. Okay, shifting gears, the superintendent's responsibilities, administrative management, that executive officer function that we touched on. Definitely when it comes to human resources issues, making nominations for employee positions, just basically organizing the way of work of the district, once you've gotten that direction from the board, through strategic planning and the budgetary process. But overseeing day-to-day work of personnel, that's a really important one. But definitely to cooperate with the board to continuously improve the district. Things that I have seen work well and when I have looked into this issue, there's the, there's an organization called the Council for Great City Schools and that they kind of provide advice, it's kind of a clearinghouse of information for like the 20 largest districts in the nation. And there, I'm not calling out any particular districts, but there are some districts that are on that list that have nine, 10-hour meetings, you know. The, the advice from, from this particular organization, I think it's good advice, is how much meeting time is spent on student achievement. That's the core function, the core mission that we're trying to accomplish. And so that is something to consider, you know, as the board is, is working through its agendas and working on that. I don't mean to say at all, I mean, you're, if not the largest, you've got to be one of the largest employers in the county, there's a whole, you own one of the largest landowners, largest transportation fleet, you know, there's a lot of things going on with delivering our kids safely to and from school and educating while they're, while they are there. So there's a lot of moving parts to that. But, you know, wartime core function, make the main things be the main thing would be some advice that I would share and I have seen other districts kind of strive for. Strategic planning process, I'm still learning about how that works in the district, but I think that's really important. You know, that's when all this, whoever's in this role, but your superintendent cannot be effective for you if she is getting pulled in five different directions and everybody's got a, a personal priority rather than a board priority that they are trying to implement. So the strategic planning process can hopefully build that consensus and y'all can focus on what your core priorities are. Everybody's not going to get everything that they want, but if the superintendent knows, hey, this is what we've got consensus on that we're really trying to achieve, she can be much more effective. And then for consideration, it doesn't have to be a discussion, but I would certainly, you know, think on this question about what does it mean after vote's taken for the board to take ownership of, of the board's decision, even if it wasn't your individual vote on something. That's a mark of a board that is well-functioning. And that's just, and my personal belief, you know, that's why if there is a board member that feels strongly about something, it's, not my personal belief, but advice I've seen from FSBA and other organizations, you know, go ahead and get that on the agenda, let it have the up or down vote and then the district moves forward based on the outcome of that. So just a couple scenarios, I think, if anybody wants to weigh in on any of these things. But interactions with community members, when, when they are approaching with concerns about how a teacher is doing or how an employee of the district is behaving, there are some board members that not, I'm not suggesting anybody necessarily in this group, but just in 25-plus years of doing this, I've seen board members in other districts, you know, immediately want to sort of take the reins in that situation, start making phone calls and really starting to, well, I'm going to get to the bottom of this. You know, but that's a personnel issue, like we were talking about, it's a personnel issue by statute. So that's, my advice would definitely be we need to pass along those scenarios to the superintendent because she has an apparatus and actual people as an HR team that can get to the bottom of a situation if it needs to be addressed. And the other thing that when I've had to counsel board members in situations like that, you know, what are, what are the odds that you're getting the whole story in the first place when, when someone's coming to you and saying, I'm being treated terrible, terribly as an employee and my principal's bad or whatever the situation is? It's, it's unlikely that that board member is getting all the information. So that was kind of the, the end. I think HR is an area where that comes up frequently, sometimes on student issues, student-parent issues, but I think if we could funnel those to the superintendent so she can get her team to work on it. Anything else that anybody needs to hear from on me or questions or thoughts that you'd like to discuss with yourselves?
I think it would be interesting, Mashaka, to just hear as a new superintendent, have you hit like any, has there been any points or times where there's been confusion for you, right?
That's probably a loaded question.
It's not a loaded question, I'm being serious.
She's taken over, I think it is.
No, but, no, in seriousness though, is, is there, have there been times and it, you don't have, we're not talking about particular board members, but just that it's not clear, the line's not clear?
There are definitely times where I feel like the information did not come directly to me so that I can act on it or whatever. I think, you know, that's something we definitely have to just continue to work on, that if there is a question, you know, and I'm not saying that it all has to always go directly to me, but to staff to actually behave.
Right.
And when I say staff, I'm talking about senior leadership, those individuals who are sitting on senior cabinet so that we can actually do the work and, and get to the bottom of it. There are definitely times that we can do, do better with that.
Yeah, and it's board, new board members, because I know after all this time, there are still times that I question myself to say, am I in the wrong lane here? Is this, is this my lane or is this outside of my lane? Personnel is usually, like, if you have HR issues, because you're right, you're never going to get the whole story from either side. So that becomes a real challenge for me. But do you guys, are there any things that are, you know, you're not sure which lane or whatnot?
I just, I always include like y'all on an email if one comes to me, but I do want to be available if somebody says, can you please call me?
Yes.
There's been those times, but I still have to redirect that to the district, you know.
And I think that's appropriate. You're an elected official, you have every right to have a conversation with, I'm always going, I think all of us are of that mindset, we're probably always going to have a conversation.
And I think that you guys do a really good job of having those conversations with community members or parents. I think another thing that you do a great job with in that area is following up with us to make sure that it's been done.
It gets done.
And I think that's important, right? That level of accountability, also, you know, not to make sure it's done, but also that those individuals know that it has been addressed or their point has been heard or, or whatever. So I, I do think that as a board, that is definitely a strength, that you guys will send, especially parents, like send parents our direction. I think we just have to keep that at the forefront of our minds so that I or you never feel like we're working in, in opposition of it. You know, even if it's a continued conversation that you're going to have, just me being along in the loop to know that it's happening, I think it's just helpful for our staff.
Yeah, and I, from my perspective, you know, any interpretation that comes from the public, the first thing that I start with is that they matter, their concern matters, right? Whether or not I agree with it or not doesn't matter and also if I happen to have more information than them about it, it doesn't matter at that moment, right? So we, we need to engage the, the individual, whether it's a parent, community member, as, you know, hey, we're here, we're elected to serve you and then help them get it to where it can best be answered. And, and the best practice that I've always done is even if I thought maybe something is best for John Finelli, right, I will, I might forward an email on to them because it sounds like it's hit his department, but I'll always copy the superintendent or others in there so that if that could better handled by somebody else, they'll chime in and redirect that. And you, and that's happened before where that, somebody else that I thought was best suited was not and they, and the right party did. So I think that, that, that is just my best practice that I've put into practice.
Yeah, when I get complaints, most of the time it's from parents and it's little things. And what I always do first is redirect them back to their school, to their principal, to the, you know, to the, recently there was a situation with how they recorded an absence or, no, it was clothing. The kid had a reprimand for what they, she was wearing, got to go back to the school. And actually, when I explained that to the parent, they understood. They realized that that's the right thing. Say, don't start here, you start there and talk to that and the counselor who wrote it up or whatever to see if you can have a conversation and work it out that way. That's the very first thing that I think you should always want to redirect it back, then take it, you know, a lot of them we can't, a lot of them have to go to people, you know, in the, the upper administration so they can figure things out. And I think that, that seems to work quite well.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're going to get the fastest result usually if it's dealt with right there, the people closest to the matter.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think being sure to just make sure people feel heard and understood and not to be in, in a response defensive. I think that's important.
And thus, we talk about flagler forward and I know Dr. Conklin, you got to sit in on one of the flagler forward sessions, but that's really what we're talking about is like how do we engage with our stakeholders, be it internal or external stakeholders, setting the expectations for how they follow up with those individuals, how they provide the information to them, just so that our stakeholders know, if I go to the board chair or if I go to the superintendent or the chief of HR, they're going to respond to me, you know, they're going to validate their, their concerns and listen to them as well as follow up with them. And so we try to run a healthy balance of if someone puts you into an email, you know, we, we try to keep that healthy balance of when do we just continue to keep the board in there? We want you to know that we've addressed it, but we also don't want you to feel like you have to be just kind of strong along as the, the district just continues the work of it. So we're trying to keep that healthy balance as well because we want people to know, absolutely, go to your board members, come to staff members as well. We just want to make sure we're listening and that we're responding appropriately to any of our stakeholders regardless of who they go to.
And I think as far as bringing issues forward to the board, I usually try to, if, if you're hearing, if I'm hearing a situation like three, from three different people, then that peaks my, I'm, what's going on here? Like what's, what's happening here? Do we have to have a board discussion about it after, of course, sharing with superintendent? Take it.
And I've had, I've had a good experience with the superintendent and the staff on the follow-up of things and getting response back with the outcomes. And I, and I, what I do see also is the, how meaningful the responses are. They're not just like, oh, thanks for, for sending this, we'll get back to you sometime in the future. There is clear outreach to these parents and constituents. So I don't necessarily see, this is an area where we're lacking, but it's a good one that we're revisiting to, to definitely, you know, build off of it, right? Because we can always be better in everything, so.
That's all I had, I was hoping to generate this discussion, so.
I have a question. Who's responsible for policing the school board?
What do you?
We have responsibilities which we just went through and sometimes, often, we have individuals who are not participating or not attending or, so whose responsibility is that? I mean, they're, they have the same statutory responsibilities as everybody here. We have, we've gone through that, we know what they are. And, you know, I've never seen so many absences in a year plus. I've never had a school board person utilize automated responses ever on their email. So that's directly affecting our constituents.
Well, let's not call out individual board members potentially.
No, I'm not, but who's, who's responsible for?
Your question is valid, your first question, I think, is a good question.
Yeah, who's responsible for policing the responsibilities of the school board?
It really comes down to, I mean, the bare bones answer is elected officials in Florida are subject to temporary removal by the governor and trial in the Senate. The type of issues that you were just describing, in my experience, has not risen to the level that any governor has ever wanted to engage with that. So that leaves potentially censure by other board members. You know, you can have a motion to censure and I have seen some districts use that, I've seen some districts sort of misuse that as a tool. It's, it can be obviously very divisive. So it, it really comes down to Florida law puts a lot of authority and trust in the judgment of the voters to pick their elected representatives and the typical way that issues like that, if the voters are not happy, it gets resolved in the ballot box.
And that's four years.
That's, it's more of an election issue than a board members policing each other issue.
Right, because it's, it's becoming a chronic problem for us, we're, we're a four-person board most of the time anymore.
I think part of it.
And that's difficult, it's difficult because we can end now, a lot of situations are going to end in a dead vote, which is going to hurt moving the district and that concerns me, you know?
I would just throw this out for, for consideration. I, a censure to me is a divisive tool, right?
I agree, no, I agree.
And so you want to get to a place where you're a healthy board, right, respectful of each other. And if, you know, it may be simply, obviously, this is a known issue and it's, okay, well, why isn't somebody here? Why are they not comfortable being here? Trying to get to the root cause of some of those things and then dealing with those so everybody feels welcomed at the table.
Right, right.
Well, let's deal with them, with the more of the, the, the issues that could come of that at a business meeting, right? Because, so we have, only because we, we, it's been made clear that Ms. Hunt has said she's, she's likely going to not finish her term. We don't know when that might be. But in the event that that happens and whether it is, is an election or a government, government appointment, governor's appointment, which I've read the statute, it clearly says government appointment, so governor's appointment, so I assume that's how it would be filled, but there may be time for that to happen. Well, we're going through a meeting, in, in the case where we have four, how do we deal with, with the vote with an even number?
You've got to have a majority for recommendation to pass.
Consensus.
So it's a majority of a quorum, so.
It's two-two, is dead.
Right.
We've already established that. So that's why I'm concerned. You can see where I'm going with this. I mean, we've been dealing with this for a year and a half or whatever.
So let me ask this.
So that's my concern, yeah, but you can see where I'm going down the road. We have some important things coming up and we may not agree, that's obvious, and we may agree, we don't know, but we need three.
What is the process if someone decides to leave, since it's been publicly stated? If a board member decides to leave, what is the process after that?
There'd be an official, no process starts until there's a resignation from office. And then the governor's office is alerted and sometimes there's a quick appointment and I've seen appointments linger for more than six months.
The last time this happened was when Peter Palmer passed away and we had a governor appointee, but that did take a good period of time. Because we're so close to an election, would they allow this seat to run in an election?
You know what, though, Colin, not the last time this happened. The last time this happened was when Andy resigned. That's the last time this happened. Andy resigned and he left two years. That's what Jill ran with me.
But that, but that seat went into an election, the only time you've ever had.
Yes, because, because it could go into an election. So my thoughts are depending on the timing of the situation.
So it must be allowed.
It is, but it depends how close it is to if they could possibly run an election. If not, then it becomes an appointment.
Is there like a clear answer, is that by the, by the qualifying date or is there?
Yeah, my guess is that.
There's got to be some.
So they have time to put them on the ballot, yeah.
Is Ms. Hunt's seat up for the election?
No, no, she just was elected.
So I would have to research this again, but I believe that it would be the governor's appointment. I would want to be sure about this, this is one of those things I'm 90% sure about, but I don't think that there would be a special election and there would be.
Not a special election, no, because there's actually a run.
Coming up.
It wasn't a special election when, when Andy Dance resigned, okay, from here. They had, there was still two years left in his term, which would be the exact same situation we have looking here. But there was enough time to add them to, add that position so that they, people could then run for that position and then were elected to a two-year term as opposed to four.
So I know, for instance, if the governor does appoint someone to an empty seat and... and there is less than, than half the amount of the term left, that person would have to run again at the next election. That part I'm clear about, I remember from the statute.
There must be a timeframe or something, I'm not sure.
It has to be the qualifying date because they've got, I mean, you have to think of the election office, they've got to get the information on the voting ballots.
So it happened.
Yes, so it has to be.
The exact same thing kind of happened.
It's a timing thing, it's strictly a timing thing depending on, and Andy knew, that's why he did that, so they could get a special election so that somebody could fill his seat for two years.
But I, I believe Andy did that like a good full year out, didn't he?
No, there was months and he knew when he had to give, give his, because he was running for a county commission seat. And he could still be a school board member until such and such a date. And that was a date, drop down date that he knew he had to literally resign here so they could get it on the ballot.
I don't mean to short circuit any of that discussion, I'll take some notes and I can report back to the board on that issue.
Okay.
But going back to the strategic plan, hopefully, the vast majority of the things that the superintendent is going to bring to you as a board, you have achieved some consensus on that, hey, these are our priorities as a district. These are the things that we want to focus on in terms of student achievement or our on-time percentage for our transportation department or whatever it might be. And when the superintendent is bringing you recommendations that will help implement what you've agreed to that you want, that's.
I think that's great guidance because if you want to bring something forward, tying it to the strategic plan makes sense. If it can't tie to the strategic plan, then that may just be a one-on-one conversation, right?
There are some districts that every single item on the agenda has a reference back to the strategic.
I think ours does, yeah. Yeah, we did that a while ago.
And our schools now as well are tying their things to the strategic plan.
Their requests.
As well. So our strategic plan right now is in its final year in its current form. We're actually going to be bringing the strategic plan to you in March with, here's where we are with the current strategic plan and likely some recommendations for some adjustments and some recommendations around the strategic plan in general. So that'll be coming in, in March. But it is an opportunity for us to ensure that it still reflects what it is that the board is passionate about and what you want us to be working on. A couple of weeks ago, I think it was, a board member brought to me a magazine around like the yearbook of the, of the area. And I just think that it's important, especially as we talk about our board meetings. We're doing our best with our board meetings to get the information on there, including the agenda, all of the presentations. When we do board briefs, we will foresight to you guys some additional things that are going to be coming up. But as we continue, we learn to work together, really just making sure that we are a board that is being efficient and we're being effective in the way that we, that we work. I think the review that was given around the parliamentary procedures are important for us to ensure that we all know how the board is going to function when, when we're here. So going back to your statement, Dr. Conklin, that all of our board members know that they can show up and this is going to be an orderly environment, it's going to be an environment that we may disagree at, but it's always going to be professional and they know what to expect as far as the parliamentary procedures side of things. I think that's super important.
And as a board member, it's, it's a different kind of job. And I don't think anybody realizes it until you sit in the seat and you go from being a private citizen to being a very public citizen. And public that feels very much like they have a right to say and do anything that they want. And so it, it is a difficult transition. I, I still find it difficult. But I've been part of very dysfunctional boards and a part of really great, highly functioning boards. And it does have a trickle-down effect. It trickles down to staff, it trickles down to schools, it trickles down. You think it doesn't because you sit in a room and we have conversations or disagreements or whatnot and that it certainly doesn't leave this chamber, but it really truly does. People become uncertain, they're not sure what direction we're going in, what's going to happen at this meeting. And it just leaves everybody feeling on edge and it really does trickle down. I've seen, when you have teachers even talking about, you know, it's, it's just not a healthy thing for the board. It's better for us all to figure out how to get along than, than it is to argue.
Well, you know, one thing I'll say is that the, as you mentioned about, you know, what, what direction we're going in, you know, that, that can change at any given time based on new information that comes in. And I, and I, it is helpful when, when maybe staff or our, our organization can see where we might be headed on an issue. I will say though that we, we, you know, you know, we do a lot of workshopping.
We're doing, we're getting better.
I think that it is the conversation, the free flow of conversation, I think we've all done, we've always made it open and available, right? Everybody has the, the right to be heard on, on a matter. And I just encourage all board members to, to speak their mind and say, hey, this is what I feel because that is what I build off of. And there's many times that I may have seen something one way and then because that board member spoke up and brought another perspective. And I'll, I'll use, I'll use the STAR lab as a perspective. You know, like, you know, I was really looking at it from, you know, usage and dollars and cents and everything. And then you brought up the per student cost and I said, you know, and then when, when staff said, yeah, this is going to, this is going to run the whole district. I mean, this is not just going to be for the elementary, I mean, it's going to go everywhere. And then you looked at the student cost and it was pennies. And, and then, then you could see what a great value, educational value this had for the whole organization, right? And so that's why I just think it's important that we, we don't hold back. And we also have to, as a board, and I'm not saying this is necessarily always happened, but, you know, we have to be respectful of the other people's opinion because if, if they feel like they're going to be criticized for thinking differently, then, then they, they might not share it, right? And that's, that's really hurts a board's growth, you know? So, but I think overall, even from the beginning, we've, just by the length of our, our board meetings, we've had a lot of information put out on the table, right? We all have to glean off of it and then make our own decisions, so.
And we as a, a district, you know, will continue to get better with that, making sure that you have all of the information that you need. And we're okay, and there have been times that, you know, you've pushed us to go back, get some more and come back to the table. I think that has to be looked at and viewed as healthy. Because if it is ever feeling like, well, you've come to the table and you don't have all the things that we need and maybe new information or different information that we're, we haven't prepared enough for, that's why we have our workshops structured the way that we have them because we can bring something to you essentially twice before you get to it for a vote. And it's okay if we need to use all of that time versus, you know, you get it that one time and then, okay, it's all there, it's, it's ready and we can move forward. And so as a, as a staff, we're okay with that, we want that. We want you to say, hey, go back and give us clear direction. But sometimes when we are not, in my opinion, like following a clear procedure when it comes to like how we operate behind Robert's rules or parliamentary procedures, we get confused on what the direction is. And then board members feel like, well, I had, we haven't done what you've asked for us to do. Well, maybe it was our understanding that that wasn't something that needed to be brought back immediately or it was something that needed to be brought back in this direction. It's, it's helpful for us to make sure we're following those procedures. And then we can have an opportunity to clarify and say, okay, just for clarification, this is the direction that the, the staff has so that we can actually go forth and do what it is that you're asking us to do.
Right.
Yeah, I, I would say overall, most presentations from staff have been great. And, but sometimes I feel like there's a little extra fluff in there that doesn't need to be there, right? And it's not, it's not, it's just kind of human nature when we're preparing a presentation. And I'm just speaking from, from myself, right? And everybody can chime in on this. But, you know, I'm looking for actionable data, actionable information, the nuts and bolts of a situation. Now, we want to hear some victories and wins and there, but in the end, we need summarized data that we can make decisions on because that oftentimes is what we're sending you back for, right? Is, is for that, that information. So I would say, in my view, looking at it from that framework, is that I, I would hope at the end, if there's numbers involved, we should see the, the hard numbers at the end. If we're, if there are issues involved, we should see the hard issues involved that we have to make clear decisive decisions on. That would just be helpful in moving things forward, right? So, go ahead.
Can I just share, what you're saying just brought to mind something. And this is why I think workshops really are important because it's the only time you really kind of get to know each other. People don't realize that, it's very isolating on the board as well. But I think I was, it was my first term on the board and we did a personality. FSBA did some sort of personality thing, right? So you would get to learn what the personality of your fellow colleagues are on the board. And I remember from that meeting, Andy, not Andy, Eddie Herrera was basically like that. He wanted the data, he wanted the numbers, he wanted, you know, that kind of thing. And for me to know that, that is just his personality, that's what he wants to know. I want, I want the feel-good stuff, right? The, I want to see the kids, I want to do whatever. I want data though, right? And you might learn that somebody else wants something or somebody else, that this is their way of work. And it was so valuable. I mean, till this day, I remember that conversation. And it was a totally different perspective. I viewed him through a totally different lens moving forward. So that's why I think retreats are really so valuable.
Well, you know what, too, we also did it master board.
Yes, yeah.
Master board does the same thing.
We usually do it all the time.
Yeah, they go through and you figure out, I'll never forget, the master board and you and a colleague. They generally did not get along very well. But then when they tested, they tested almost identical, which is interesting.
Yes, interesting.
It was interesting because they're very different people. But that led to a lot of conversations. So master board is another way of honing your skills.
Those gaps.
Yeah, it does.
And I, I've done those personality tests and there's several of them out there. And it is quite interesting when you.
It really is.
That you, you do go, wow, I guess I kind of do seem to think that way.
Ever, if you remember, we did, not all of us did it, but we did it at the beginning. Because what I remember about you, Mr. Furry, is that you were the same number on every, all of the different areas.
Yes, you're right.
So when I, what I, I will say, as we think about all five of you, when we're getting a presentation, we have to get a little bit of all five of you into the presentation, right? We have one board member who needs the numbers in a visual format, has stated that multiple times. And so we have to make sure when we get in there, it's a visual format. We know that Ms. Messero, she's going to want some historical information in there. She's going to want people to know, like, this is where we started, now this is how we got to that place. And so all of those things, we have to utilize when we're getting ready to, to get a presentation for you. So for you, you, and every time you and I meet, you say the same thing, I just want it straight to the point, just give me the numbers, give me the facts. Actionable things, right? But if we were to do that, then we would lose some of the board members. So we have to add some of that historical information in there. We have to have some of the statutory information in there because Dr. Conklin's always going to go to, you know, statutorily, what is required, you know, why we're doing this, you know? So we have to keep all of those things in mind when we're creating something for you.
Well, you're just highlighting the value of a board because it's diversity of thought and different perspectives that help us get somewhere, right? And.
Collectively, we're much wiser than we are individually.
Yeah, I a hundred percent agree with that.
Yeah.
So, okay, well, that was a good conversation there. And so, but that's encouraging to know that on the backside, you are thinking along those lines when, when it comes to the table, so.
And many of the, the things, honestly, we can go through and identify, okay, this is the topic. We know that the presentation, we need to have this information in it because here's the question that's going to come up or here's a thought process. You know, I think that especially like Ms. Chong, Ms. Chong may not speak as much, but I can already identify, here are the things that she's going to want to know and that, and she's going to be listening for those pieces. And if it's not included, she's going to ask. But if we include all those things, it's, it, you know, it's going to be there and she's going to sit back and she's going to, you know, she'll, she'll, okay. It's good. And so we go through that when we're preparing something to make sure it's going to meet the needs of the board as a whole. And in order to meet the needs of the board as a whole, you have to consider all of the members of the board. So there is sometimes some fluff in there and sometimes the fluff is in there because there are other board members.
That like fluff.
That, not necessarily like the fluff.
No, I know, I know.
That's what I call it, but it's not necessarily.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yes.
I'm only worried.
Make it like. I, I, we could get to the point a little bit quicker. What we also, so that you know, is if there's a new topic that's coming up, we try to consider, is this a topic that has been heard before by this board? If it is a topic that has been heard before by this board, then that is going to influence the way we create the presentation. If it's a topic that has not been heard before by this board, then we are going to include some of that historical information, bringing us up to the point where we are so that every board member feels like I have all of the information that I need to act on this thing before me. Who cares if it's gone before fifteen boards before us? This is the first time it's before this board, here's the information that you need to know so that you can make the decision as a board, as to the direction that you provide.
I think that's very wise of you, LaShaka, because there are superintendents that I've seen never learn that, right? That value of looking at each perspective. Sometimes you can get in that position where it's like, well, let me count to three and I'm okay. But I appreciate the fact that you recognize looking at all of the needs for whatever information it might be for the board members to include that, at least have it on your mind as a thought.
And I would just add, obviously, you represent the community. The community is going to be much more engaged with the presentation that hits.
Right.
You know, different aspects, whether it's qualitative versus quantitative data.
Right.
So I have another thing I'd like to have us cover also is just about chairman role and communication. And, and I was going to, I was going to meet with you individually, but I thought this would be better here because any one of us at any given time could sit in the seat. So, and I think what is important to know as a, as a chair is some of the do's and don'ts, especially when it comes to communication and sunshine and how that could happen outside of the workshop or the, or the business meeting. So, and any other advice that you can give as somebody sitting in this role?
Sure. So my goal is that the entire board is informed. The most efficient way to do that is get us all together in sunshine and everybody hears it all at the same time. If a board member asks me a question about a legal issue, my preference would be, you know, sort of as we're wrapping up that conversation or we get to the bottom of what that question would be, is do I have your permission? Can I share this out with all the board members? Because I think it was a great question, they would all benefit and want to make sure the superintendent. So everybody's operating with the same set of facts. So that's, there may be something highly unique or very individual that either doesn't need to be shared or they would ask me not to share that. And I would keep that confidence unless the judge tells me that I would have to disclose it. I certainly can't be a conduit of information between you. I can't poll board members and go to the superintendent like, we got three votes for this. Would never do anything like that. But I am, I am going to strive to keep all of the board members on the same page with the same information. If that's covering.
Yeah, so then, I guess what I'm saying is, so in, in order to keep the board informed, are there, you know, I've, I've heard we can do, you know, one-way communication as the chair, right? How, what is the, the most effective way for me to communicate and keep the board informed without crossing sunshine laws?
Sure. And if you receive any kind of communication from a board member, the basic idea is, let's not respond back to it. Because that could generate something questionable. You know, the gold standard or the legal line is, any matter that's likely to come before the board for a vote or for consideration can't be discussed outside of the sunshine. Whether, if someone just chiming in and responding, saying, hey, I think that's a good idea, hmm, you know, we've gotten a lot closer to that line than I'm comfortable with. So, we would need to do that. I think communication from the superintendent can also help in this manner. And obviously, whoever's the chair and the superintendent are going to be in close communication. So, sometimes that communication can just be better handled from the superintendent. But let's avoid reply-alls on any kind of.
Yeah, that was another question. Sometimes we get, we will get emails that, it's my role as a chair to answer the general inquiries. And so, but they'll, we will be copied on, all of the board members will be copied on it. So, you're saying in that instance, irregardless, just reply directly to the, to the person that is responding? Or can I reply all on something like that?
He's answering, so.
A fair complaint.
Constituent.
If there's constituent concern.
That was sent to the whole board.
Sent to the whole board. I think the chair could then say.
On behalf.
On behalf of the board, thank you for your inquiry, I'm directing it to the superintendent. So, then everybody would know, hey, that, I don't need to chime in because the chair has responded to.
That was my intention, right?
Okay. And I think that that's not in any way close to that line that we talked about, indicating how you would handle a particular issue. But it's just informative that that inquiry is being addressed.
So, if I respond to that and I, in that email, I, if, say, the superintendent has not been copied on that, if I reply all and say, I have referred you to superintendent Moore within there, that would be okay? Communication for everybody to know.
Yes.
And now, if, then if, for updates on that now, would those need to be individual? Or could the superintendent still copy us all on those responses without any issues there?
I would be fine with one-way communication from the superintendent to the board members that did not flow back.
As long as we're not responding to those as a reply-all at that point, then we should be okay. We would, we would just, if we had an issue, directly contact superintendent Moore about the results or input.
Okay, I think that's a good way of word.
All right. So, now we kind of, that's how we'll manage that from here forward on those matters.
I think too, it's important that you do the FSBA chairman workshop.
It's great training.
Yeah, no, I'm not opposed to that at all.
That'll help, that'll help you answer a lot of these experiences.
It's a full day.
Yeah, June.
Yeah, no, I usually will train, when there's something that directly applies, you know, I jump on those. Especially, I found like the finance one, very helpful. Still a fire hose of information, but it's actually, you know, as time has gone on, some of the things I learned are finally, are working.
You're seeing it, yeah, yeah.
It helps, yeah.
So, no doubt. Yeah, I, I, I will, when that's available, take that.
Yeah, it's good, it's pretty good, yeah.
Okay. Is there any other advice for the chair role? Whether it be through during meetings or anything that's kind of general in.
It appears to be on track, so.
Great, well, just if you see something that I can approve on, let me know.
All right, sure, sure.
But we'll just keep it moving forward, all right? Any other questions or?
Nope.
Thinking about other things that we have in the next couple hours.
Right.
Are we doing this or not?
What is our time?
Half hour tops.
Half hour.
Yeah, you have lunch, lunch will be here at 12 o'clock. It is sandwiches this time for sure. Last time I said it was sandwiches and it was pizza, this time it is definitely sandwiches.
What I would say, we have, if there aren't any other conversation for Mr. Delaney, then we could start this here and see how far we get. And then if we need to come back again, we'll do it again. But it just, it's all, we may be able to knock this out for 30 minutes if there aren't a lot of changes, yeah, so.
Do you have a copy of it?
I don't, and I'm going to slide it through.
Do you have, Lorraine had emailed all of us, if you look at her.
And if I can have, we can make some copies of it.
Like this morning?
No, no, well, you just, it was a few, it was before the last meeting.
Will you ask for Ariel to make copies of the updated procedures manual?
If you don't want to do it on your computer or your phone, we'll get you a printed copy.
Yeah, we're going to grab a printed copy right now.
Okay, well, there, I'm not here to take individual advice or comment. Okay.
Okay, give that, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, everybody has a copy in front of them right now? So, then we'll proceed. I just, I just Googled Lorraine's email and it's a PDF attachment.
Yeah, no worries. I mean, it's really not a lot in the beginning anyway because those are, we have our mission and our vision, they're not going to be changing. And then you have the strategic plan, which we're getting ready to enter.
Yeah, right, so.
Right?
So, we're going to have to revisit that part.
And we did make a change to the one goal. I'm not sure if it's in your copy there, but we changed it to resilience and well-being. We did make that change on, on everything.
Okay.
The social, emotional, well-being goal, the title is resilience and well-being.
Resilience and well-being.
Yes, that was, that was the direction earlier in the year from the board.
That's good, that's right. Yeah, mine still has the old.
Yeah, it does, mine do.
But we'll make sure that that.
Resilience and well-being.
Yes.
The only thing I noticed, just going through quickly, is on goal six, communication, that the last statement it has for upcoming half penny, and since that's already been discussed, we just need to change the language there.
Because that's a 10-year.
Yeah, that's 10 years, we're good for a while here. So, upcoming's going to be nine years away. So, yeah, that just, we should just change the language, that's all I have here.
But you know, we do have the, we do have the oversight committee. Would that be covered under six B increase outreach or direct communication to the community organization?
For the half penny?
Well, I just say, we're going to be having feedback from that. So, maybe we find a way to maybe change that language to be more focused on the oversight committee.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. That, that needs to be changed.
All right. So, then, yeah, we'll move past the strategic plan then.
Yes, because that will come before you.
Then it goes into accountability.
Accountability board, authority of a role and authority of board members, powers and duties of statutes.
What's it, what's it called again?
Procedure manual.
School Board Operating Procedure Manual. Just pull up Lorraine's name, email Lorraine.
One of the last emails you got from her.
She has it there.
If you search her email and you're.
Yeah.
I got it, I got it, I got it, I'm sorry.
Ignore me.
I feel like we beat this thing to death. I mean, not you guys, I.
Well, we've been at a lot longer.
In our first meeting, we didn't have a lot of changes, other than just some language, so I don't, I don't.
Well, you're not going to see a lot.
What I, what I'd like to say is that if anybody, what we can do to kind of make this a little more efficient is if anybody has specific changes, we could jump to those sections and then.
Not, well, you're going to have to have specific changes on, well, we may or we may not, on B, the superintendent, school board attorney, because that has to be.
Where, where are you?
Page eight. Page eight, it's at the bottom. Because we don't know exactly what we're doing there yet. So, that, I'm saying eventually that's going to have to be updated. We're not in a position to do it now.
I don't, yeah, we can't change.
No, we can't do that now. I'm just saying that is going to have to be updated at some point.
That's a good point, I thought that's just for a mental note.
Yeah, we're going to have to do that. And same thing with two, that's going to have to be updated somehow. Because that, that just, and it might be just adding and deleting a little bit of language. But we can't do it at this point, but those are going to have to be done.
You know, one thing in here that was a little bit bothersome to me and I'll be, I don't have the reference point on here, but when, it was how we deal with anonymous complaints, right?
Yeah, that's a big conversation.
I understand that we cannot use our resources to investigate every single anonymous complaint. But we should be putting in some sort of a tracking system, if we don't have it in place already, to see if there is a trend in these. Obviously, if something rises to the level of threat or safety or security, that's, you know, we have to, you know, look at that right away. But if it's a general inquiry about, hey, I think there's fraudulent activity happening or this, that, anonymous, we should be tracking that to say, hey, we've now gotten three emails along the lines of this anonymous report. It may be something we might want to start looking into. And I have heard of other districts using a third-party service that is, and it is truly anonymous because the district does not actually receive the information. It goes to that third party and that third party filters it to the district. And then it all gets logged in there. And this is, this is, this could be for any kind of thing, whistleblowing. I mean, there's really no limit on it, but it is a way that people can share things that might be going on that are afraid to be persecuted or, you know, because, you know, a lot of things do come forward.
Page 17. It's anonymous, yes, I was looking for.
Okay, you found, you found the page.
Page 17, it's K. And I, I knew it was in here because I had seen it, but I didn't know where. Anonymous phone calls and/or letters.
Thanks for finding that.
Yeah.
What is the reason that we are not acknowledging anonymous complaints?
We've never acknowledged anonymous. I think, I think staff probably has looked into anonymous letters, but as a board, if it's not sent to you, because you basically, I mean, you could be down a rabbit hole every week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree that we can't necessarily, every single thing that comes in, but if something does have some merit, there should be something in place because if an anonymous comes in today for something and then another one comes in another two months on the same thing, we might not even remember that last complaint to see that, oh, this seems to be a pattern here, right? That's really what I'm talking about. But the, I mean, again, it's like, again, I remember previous councils that, you know, if we get something anonymous, who are we responding to? We don't even know who's on the other side that we're responding to. I get that argument, but I think we should have a practice of at least acknowledging. So, if something comes back around and it now becomes to the level where it might pique the interest of the district or the board, we look back and we go, wow, we did get maybe three or four inquiries about that matter.
I don't know, well, I think it's a, it's a kind of a Pandora's box.
Well, we do have the school surveys, like, we just had one and you could write anything in there if you wanted to.
It was anonymous.
I think it is.
Well, anonymous, people don't really believe these days that, in that.
Big brothers watch.
Yeah, it's, it's too easy to track. I mean, yeah, it's anonymous, you didn't put your name, but now they can track it back to your IP address.
Yeah, exactly.
And so, it's just one of those things that, you know, I, I went to a, an event, this was, this was quite a while ago and there was a superintendent there, or former superintendent at that time, and said they had put that. And they had uncovered quite a bit of financial fraud and things like that within their organization. They were a much larger organization than ours. But again, it was through these anonymous tips that these came through. So, it's something that I, I think we should be thinking about on the go-forward because that's always kind of made me feel a little bit unsettled since we moved past that in the last meeting, so. So, I would like to address that in some way, shape, or form, some options.
So, maybe it's not through how you as a board operates. Maybe this is something that needs to come up at an actual board meeting or request for us to provide information to you or look into this to bring to you as a board and outside. Because this is just how you as a board will operate, your procedures.
How we respond.
Yeah.
Well, I, I agree that not necessarily a board level review of this, but from a district level. It wouldn't be like we're going to go in there.
Like somehow they need to maintain them and review them. And if they get, every time we would get an anonymous, just.
Yeah, I think that.
If there's any repetitive.
I think if, if it's something that you want to get more information or give us direction on, I definitely would say, let's not continue to have a conversation now, since this is just for procedures. And then let's bring this up in an appropriate meeting that we could actually have that discussion and we could take action.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah, we're going to do something.
As a board though, then if we're talking about the board side of this, I do agree that this is not an area we want to individually dive into. Unless somebody has a real concern, they can bring it forward. But we should leave this to staff have, we'll talk about if this is worthy of bringing back to.
Staff.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move past that.
Page 11. This has been, page 11 and it's under board meeting workshops, board meetings and workshops, and it would be page 11, bullet 123. Last year, a couple of years ago, we put in place where at the business meeting, people could only bring public comment to agenda items. This has been a bone of contention to our constituents for a very, very long time because they would like to speak about anything at the beginning and then if they want to stay around, they can speak about anything at the end. I don't know what everybody's feelings are on that, but that was something that was placed before I was chair, so, yeah. And it's something that we have heard issues on.
I was going to bring that up too. I mean, I don't, I don't have an issue one way or the other.
I don't either.
Well, here, oh, go ahead, Christine.
I think we're in a, there's nothing real chaotic happening, you know.
Right.
Right.
Like COVID was a couple of years ago, so.
Correct, yeah, COVID and, yes.
I think people should have that opportunity.
And we do allow that at the workshops, at the beginning and the end, which is, which is closer to the beginning of the business meeting. It's, it's my feeling that, you know, that that is our business meeting. We've already, we've already met in public twice before that. People have had opportunity to speak about anything to us before. And I know sometimes there's a convenience factor because of after-work, right? But we have to get our business done. It's very important that we get through that with our clearest mind. I do, I want to hear from the public. But I think the reason why we come and invest the time in these workshops, which as Matt said, not every school board does as much before a meeting as, as we may do, that we create the opportunity for them to see what's happening, where we're headed, and to participate beforehand so that when we get to that meeting, we can run through that meeting as efficiently as possible. And I would say, in my experience, all of our business meetings have moved fairly quick and efficient through consent and other things. So, it's not like it's a, I mean, I know that there's some city council meetings that are going till 11 o'clock at night. I mean, we, you know, God forbid we have a hot button in the topic, we cannot be held up the business of the board till 11 o'clock at night.
We've been there.
I know, I watched them.
We've been there, we've been there.
And we've been there late.
You haven't, but we have.
Well, we had one with the, with the pool, we were there.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was late. Oh, yeah, that was, that was late, too.
Yeah, so I mean.
And I was late the other one.
It happens, but, you know, but that wasn't, that was on the agenda, and those folks came during that time and voiced their, on the business at hand at that moment, but I think also it's a matter of communicating, maybe to, you know, through the beginning of the meetings to the community, that there are other methods for you to get heard also, that you, your physical presence is not the only way, right? There are electronic communications that can be done, letters can be written, and we do get them, I mean, there's, we come in here, and here I have letters from, from folks that wrote in, still snail mail, right? Letting everybody know all the options, so I personally think that we have a good thing in place here at the moment, but if, if it doesn't, and I don't know that we've had a lot of that extra public comment at the end, since I've.
I don't have a problem either way, I mean, we did it for that purpose, so we could get our business accomplished first, because it was a business meeting, that was the entire reason we came to this decision.
And we did it because our meetings were insane.
Because of previous, yeah, situation, but I don't think it would be that much of a delay either way, if we, if we just went ahead and allowed them to speak on anything. They still only get three minutes, you know, and I don't think it's gonna set our business meeting back, but it certainly would make constituents happy.
My biggest concern would be, like, an hour of comments, and then, yeah, this feeling of being rushed to get through our business and not.
And they're not really.
And that's true, and that's a possibility, too. Like I said, I could go either way, I just think we need to make sure we're on the same page.
And here it is, we are there to deal with the business of that night, so if we're hearing comments on another, on things that are not even being voted on that night, it's, it's not necessarily relevant to the agenda, so I know it's important to those that are coming forward, I think we would, I think we should leave it the way it is right now, but what I would be open to, if we felt that the demand for this increased, was to cap a period of time upfront for non-agenda items, and then therefore, I'm just, this is not necessarily the model, but I'm just gonna say, if we put a cap of 20 minutes, 30 minutes, whatever.
The state legislature does that, too.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we should do this as a response to.
Although I hate when the state legislators do that.
Yeah, I know, but it should be a response to a need, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Right now it doesn't seem that, but we can revisit that anytime and make that change at any time.
Yeah, it keeps coming and raising its ugly head.
Yeah.
So it's something to consider.
And I've heard other models, too, where, like, say, within that 30 minutes, if you have, if the maximum is three, but you have X amount of people, you divide up the time so that they can have a, they may not get three minutes, right, yeah, so you, so.
The state board definitely does that.
So, again, great, great, great idea, but I don't, I am not seeing the need for it at the moment to open that upfront, personally, right?
Can the chair say, you know, we're gonna allow, like, 30 minutes to come in?
Can you make that change on the fly?
The cap?
Mr. Delaney?
For public comment.
What I would recommend is that you do it by policy, that you have a policy that would be flexible based on the number of people signed up to speak, so it doesn't appear ad hoc, instead, you're going back to policy that may have triggers based on how many speakers you have. Some districts do limit to, say, there's a maximum of 15 minutes for non-agenda public comment, right at the beginning of the meeting, and, you know, lots of times there's two or three people that may have some sort of community update-type information. What I have heard in the past is that partly it's to be cognizant of staff who maybe don't need to stay really late, because they only have one item on the agenda or whatever.
That, too, and then, I would say, I don't personally think it's a great idea to put that on the chair, whoever sits that role at the moment, because what it does is that if it's, let's just say it's a, it's a topic that the chair feels strongly about in any direction, they could be potentially looked at as, oh, you're allowing that public comment to go, because you seem to like that issue.
That would be my worry.
Right, and so I think it has to be a clear-cut policy.
No, I agree.
But I, I have not seen it reach to the level of demand at the moment, but if it truly was that situation, I think we could, we could convene and change these rules at any time to accommodate the need of the community, but right now, if there's not, if we're not having a problem with it at the moment, then why do we need to change it?
That's fine, I just want to make sure we're on the same page, because that will come back to us again, it's gonna be a constant, especially when they, their purpose basically is the fact people can get there early, say they're bitten, leave, you know, but now they can't now, they have to come and wait till the end, and our meetings haven't been long, and hopefully we never get into that situation that we were in, in the past, so we can continue on, but just keep in the back of your minds.
And, you know, I really think maybe at the beginning of the meeting, maybe as part of the rules, is maybe just remind folks that there are other methods, and I would, I would argue that they would get a better response for their issue if they did send it in as an email, because we respond immediately, I mean, and staff responds very, so waiting 30 days to get to be heard, and then just wait to interpret your public comment is the slow way of getting results, right? So, maybe we can emphasize.
And anybody who does come up for public comment and say that they want a follow-up, we do, staff, we do follow-up with them on whatever their public comment is.
I think that's good. The thing that I find most frustrating about public comments sometimes is, you know, how we're not supposed to engage. That is so hard for me sometimes.
You think?
I mean, especially me.
You think? I think the rest of us are pretty good at it.
I think what I struggle with is if somebody comes up and they share information that is simply not true, that, to me, that is grounds for a correction right away, but I get it.
Who gives that?
I know.
And I guess it comes down to who gives that corrective response, right?
I would be fine with the chair giving, just somebody needs to correct the record.
Chair or superintendent.
Or the superintendent, because if that information, that false information is not addressed or corrected during that meeting immediately, then it is the truth.
Yeah.
The public buys it as.
You're right, you're right.
And that is a concern, but my fear is, my understanding of why we don't comment directly is because essentially.
We get into a back and forth.
Right, well, not even that, again, that, that could be an issue, because now, you know, if it involves a topic, you know, that individual board member's response could kind of lend to where he stands.
It just opens the door to a public fight, and it's.
Right, right, so.
And I think, I mean, when you do respond, I completely get when it's something that is completely not true, however, then when you don't respond, it gives off the impression that it's truth, but maybe it's not truth, we just need to look into it a little bit more, so.
Yeah.
I think as a board, my reflection is that when there happen things that have been, that rise to the level of they need to be addressed, in closing comments, someone has said, Superintendent, can you make sure in your closing comment you address this portion?
You're 100% right, the frustration that I have is the person or the people who may have shared that information, they left, they walked out the door.
Yeah, they're gone.
So they never get the truth.
They may not, but we follow up with them, if they've said, the public will get the truth.
Yeah, yes, but they do leave, right.
I personally would like to see those things addressed as soon as possible, I mean, just like with the trip that just happened, you immediately spoke up and said, we're handling it, and I thought that that was fine.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, it does make it, does help.
It might, I think what, after they comment, if a board member has a concern of the content that was said, that needs clarification, to just say, can we please?
Superintendent, clarify, that's a good idea.
That way we just have, we have one voice coming out, and, and then also, they are going to, and Superintendent can assure them, we're going to follow up with you, so you're going to get that.
We can have a point of information, that would be the time to call a point of information, Superintendent, and then we'll all know that that's what it's about, but it's a point of information, and that would help, okay? Okay.
That's how we'll deal with that.
All right, the other, let me see what else. Liaison, page 13, I would like to see under B, where school liaison assignments, bullet added, that would say, in the event, we all are not, I'm on page 13, we're all not available, I get it. Yeah, I mean, I understand, we're all not available, but for the, to make all the meetings, I don't expect any of us to do that, but I do think that perhaps if you cannot make it, it's worth a shot to see if maybe somebody else is available to take that meeting to cover it.
And that's okay, Mr. Delaney, right? If we throw an email out to board members that say, you know, I can't go to.
A SAC meeting.
A SAC meeting, could somebody cover for me?
Is there anybody, is there, yeah, we're just asking for somebody to go to a meeting, and you can do that, and we can all try to help each other, because it's really a valuable piece to our community, and when they don't get that service, they get annoyed, and they don't think we're here and are listening or participating, so we can try, I mean, we, you know, we all have responsibilities, but there are times when we have to cover each other.
Yeah, there's other, like, I, for the, for the auditorium governing board, I couldn't be there in person, but they had a Zoom link, so I was able to Zoom into the meeting.
Yeah, sometimes you can, sometimes you can't do that either.
Exactly, and if you can't, like, for example, Indian Trails scheduled their SAC meeting on the same night of our school board meeting.
There you go.
So, you know, you, I sent an email to them, say, hey, can you give me some updates? So there are other ways you can engage before you actually have coverage.
Yep.
Some meetings are more meaningful than others, I mean, I've been to some SAC meetings that we walked in, there was, okay, call to order, okay, boom, goodbye, and it was like, you know, there was nothing going on, so.
It shouldn't be like that, but, yeah.
But it doesn't make it any less important for your presence, I'm not trying to say that, you know what I mean?
I may or may not have sat in on some of those, too.
Even if you can't make one of the meetings, you know, just touching base with the principals, there's other things that they always have going on, like, I just visited Law's Worth.
Yeah, those things happen.
Just to be present.
But, yeah, and to make that, and then we can make it to the general public, and it shows that we're earning our keep.
And it is, you know, we're accountable also to our liaison assignments, so if they feel they're being underserved, you know, they can reach out to the superintendent.
But we can, but we can help, that's what I'm saying, we can easily help.
We try to help.
And that will avoid all those issues, or, like, a lot of times, I know there's certain meetings in the future I'm not gonna be able to make, I'll put an email out, if anybody can cover this, but you guys have done that, you've done that on a major.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, we've done this in the past.
Yeah, especially if you clearly are gonna be out of town, you know it ahead of time.
Yeah, you can set it up, exactly, so, that was the only thing I saw there, and the last thing I think I saw, we took care of anonymous, oh, in, under social media, a lot of that's gonna change with legislation, first of all.
I don't know how they're gonna do that.
I don't either, page 15, page 15, but we have to be aware of our social media, you know, I think number four is important, avoid posting content that indicates you have already formed an opinion on pending matters, we gotta make sure we don't do anything like that, all of us, I mean, that's probably one of the biggest problems, I think, for all boards today, is navigating social media, it's difficult.
I've limited mine.
Yes, and then, and then you all have to keep our records, which I think we all know that by now, that if you don't, it's never gonna happen, but we have to keep our records. That's all, and we don't need to change anything there, I think what it says is pretty clear. That's it, that's, and I, like, I scanned it, you all may have different things, too, like, to look at, but that's what I saw of things that we needed to address, the rest pretty, looks pretty good.
And I would just also say, at times, you know, we get excited about a topic, and sometimes we're asking the district for things, for more information, we should freely get all the information we need, right, but I really think when we're gonna put staff to work, we should have some meaningful thought behind it, on, for, that there's some outcome in the future that's kind of, you know.
I think we have something in here that, that we really.
Well, it says two hours, no more.
We should not be asking staff to do anything that requires more than, I think, was it two hours?
Right, and.
Unless, and you could bring it to the board, the issue or topic or whatever it is, and if a majority of us think, yeah, can you go down this rabbit hole and check it out, then they would do it.
That's about, that's all that I noticed, and it's 12 o'clock.
So for, for the purpose of the document, there was communication around the half cent, we'll look at that to see if there's some language with oversight, there may be a need to make some adjustments in the area of legal, once we identify what our structure will be. There was no change with the anonymous, as far as the board action, yeah, the board action, there may need to be some additional discussion, so there's not anything that has to be actually changed as far as the document goes right now, but it was just really conversation, we did have conversations around the public comment, the board chair will clarify at the beginning of the meeting around public comment, receiving feedback back, or other ways that they may express their, their comment.
I still would put a bullet under liaisons, just for new.
And the bullet, I'm sorry, I did not write that.
And it's not for this group, we've had that conversation, but it would be for anybody else who's new to the board, then they would know right away.
Okay.
That would make sense, that's all.
I did not write that down, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? I see here on the request for information and data on the second bullet, it's sort of directs board members, or encourages board members to meet with district-level administrators, that is a process that's working for the board, I certainly won't mean to insert myself, I have seen superintendents in the past say they would, would like those requests for meetings to go through the superintendent's office, because if one board member has a question, there's a likelihood that a second or a third, or maybe all five board members might have a similar question, that will tie up an administrator in five different meetings, and if there's a grant that's due, or a budget that needs to be finalized, or things like that, sometimes I've seen boards try to request, run those requests through the superintendent, so, just for consideration.
Okay, so where was that?
15, is it?
The second bullet point under request for information.
Yeah.
Of 15, or what page?
Yeah, it's page 15, request for information, that data.
Okay, there we go, yeah, I see.
I mean, it creates a problem if it's not one, but.
I'm okay if it goes directly to senior-level staff and myself, I think that's.
But you should always be CC'd on it.
Yeah.
CC the superintendent. Got it, that makes sense. Done?
That's good, all right, does anybody else have anything else to add? So we knocked this out.
Lunch, hey, we did it, we're done, that's our annual review.